The special item is the public safety fee. Everyone should have one in their packet.
During the last meeting, the governor had asked that I do some comparisons. And so there's a spreadsheet on the very last page of your document that I did that kind of shows how other cities are. And that's not all of them, because I think there's, I don't know what I cut down, thirty, thirty of them that are now implementing public safety fees around the state. But this is just kind of different sizes, how much they are, you know, how much the tax rate was, because that was a comment that was made, that we got a fairly high tax rate compared to some cities. And the town of, city of Jacksonville, years ago, they put this fee on their bills and they were challenged, but they have, they overcame the challenge. It's all okay, because it's a surcharge. And so it doesn't have to do with taxes. And what they're currently charging, just Jacksonville alone, and their town's about the same size as ours, twenty dollars for a police fee, and then they're trying to get an additional thirty-five dollars for fire. That's pretty large.
Pretty huge.
Yeah, pretty much.
Well, if you were Jacksonville, and every single house practically is poor, and it's a very old town, I'll bet their insurance is who cried.
And their, their tax rates, the three dollars and sixty-one cents. So, it kind of is all over the board on, on what the tax rate for people or the population, but it's just kind of a generic.
And remember, until they repealed the ballot measure related to the super majorities you had to do to raise taxes.
(laughing).
These fees were kind of the only way, a lot of places could raise any kind of revenue as well, so that was part of the, part of why things, a lot of, a lot of municipalities went on this direction versus other taxes stuff, because you've got to go along the ballot, that's an expense in and of itself. And then again, you have double, you have that two-thirds, you yell the majority of having to have at least-
We have to do that?
Not anymore, that has been repealed. But for a while, you had to have, you had to have at least fifty-one percent of all voters vote, and then you had to have a majority on that. And that really was tough, because getting people, getting over a fifty percent-
Just out for the ballot.
For just a, an issue like that was really difficult.
And it's good.
Yeah, we have, so, I, it's tax rate out of all of these here.
And Nisa.
Second from the highest. No, we are the highest.
I think Nisa-
This is right at-
Is right at the same one that we're at, right?
The Baker City is higher.
Then our six point five?
That's, no, it's not, I'm sorry.
No, I really do think Nisa and like fewer up percents, you know, thousand, great close.
And in regards to the fee, the safety fee, really it makes not a difference to the population size, because it's dependent on the number of services that they're providing.
Right, because like in Redmond, they have a, a six dollar, I think is what it is, but by having their population, that will provide them with six officers.
Oh, yeah.
You know, which is a big, huge increase. What I'm suggesting is we do five dollars to afford us one additional officer, because we need that twenty-four hour coverage. We're already down one officer anyway, but when we get up to full staff, if we had seventy thousand dollars in our general fund to apply for a police officer, you know, it would be very beneficial, because I think as we have seen, the crimes are going up, the demand for service is going up. So, yeah. And I did just kind of some, an outline that if we decide to do this, that can be put out to the public at the voter meetings or waiting voter meetings to show, you know, what it's going to do.
I think we should do that, and I think we should have more, more, you know, some article in the paper, or some ad even, that people come and comment. I think we should have a comment period, because we don't, we don't do that too often, but-
You could put a flyer in with their bills, yeah.
Yeah, we could do that, and then, you know, set a date to have that as part of a regular meeting, and, and so we just have a long comment period. So I think if, you know, just having this suddenly show up in your bill is not going to work very well.
Well, and basically, I, we've had some serious issues in the past, but I've had more comments about this possibility than I've had about almost anything. And I think that somehow, we've just come off this and are still in this huge controversy over our water quality. And if we're going to add money to the water bill for water quality solutions, I think, you know, that's a pretty easy sell. To add the money and say, yeah, well, we're not going to do the water, but we are going to increase the police force with your water bill, and that is going to be, I think, a difficult proposition. I would almost rather see us charge ten and split it five and five.
Now, can we do that?
I mean, we know that we have to start looking at our water-
And we call it, we call it water, sewer, and safety.
I don't know what-
We can do it.
Because I think you would need to do this two separate. And I think until we find out what the water-
Rate.
Well, and what the solution is, we have-
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing, until we know whether we need this, that, or the other thing, and how much, because then we can use that as, you know, argument anyway, for why we are doing that.
Right, I think they need to be, in my opinion, separate, would be very clear, separate issues. We have public safety, and then we'll have our rates, because I think not only will we be looking in the long run at, you know, water rates, but possibly sewer rates, or, you know, different things in the future, that-
Yeah.
Once Carol is done with the master plan update for the water, then we should go right into a rate review, so we know where our rates should be.
Yeah.
And then if we do get a loan for water improvements, water line improvements, or a water treatment, however we go about it, USDA, if we get a loan from them, will set those rates, and then you'll have X amount of time, by the time that project gets done, to have that rate at a certain number. And they will mandate what number that is. And I, I do think, as we're looking at this, that we should slowly, like, say five dollars, just slowly increase it, because we know it's going to increase.
We have an ordinance that tells us we can increase our water. I don't remember how long ago it was, it was a long time ago, you remember it? Okay, so, I mean, that should give you an idea of where we're at, and how much we can do right now. Can dig that-
But to not get challenged on it, you really want to make sure you bet that rates, you need to know what you're doing with it, you need to have the rate study, you know, to kind of get the rate review, rate study, so that you've got a plenty of basis, so that way it, and then like you said, a lot of it, because USDA tends to be off, and/or maybe the state, those are two different funding sources for what the town is looking at, and either one, those entities will tell you what it's going to be anyway, so at that point, then you know what you're working with. So, it, it, because it's a condition of financing, you've got to be able to repay that obligation, you know, whatever the interest rate they set, that's paid over twenty, thirty years, that's going to be, a lot of that, I think, is let them do that for you, so that way it kind of-
But we can't add to the water rate and then spend it on police.
No, no. They are, this is, this is a utility surcharge, this is a separate above and beyond, it comes on the water bill, because it's a convenient, or sewer bill, because it's a convenient mechanism to collect it, but within the town limits, this would not of course apply to service, to anybody that's outside of-
Which, which, that's written in here, right?
But they also, well-
And they pay for the water system, that is something that can be opposed on outside of the town, because that, their benefit, their users of the, of the system, so users of the system pay for the maintenance, that's how that works.
But they have a different police department.
Correct, their county, their sheriff, covered by the sheriff's department, so that's the, how that works. But you know, this is just a surcharge, they are, they're legal, and just like you said, it's what your stomach is for it, because of the, you know, if you can impose, you can impose a thousand dollars to the water, I mean, I think at a certain point, there's probably judicial review that would shut you down, and I'm not sure what the upper limit is, because nobody's ever pushed it that far, but the, it's, again, you're legally able to do it, politically, that's a question you guys have to determine as far as. And then the other question that you need to make too, is are you going to try to have this go to effect immediately with an emergency clause, we put it both directions in there, just kind of a, I don't know if this would really constitute an emergency, I think it probably has to go to effect in thirty days after the pass.
Thirty days, and-
If, if, if we had some situation where I, where I mean, we had, you know, if we had twenty opiate overdoses or something like that, that might justify an emergency, or, or, you know, several, something along those lines.
But it has to be pretty serious.
It needs to be, for, for revenue raising measure, it has to be serious, because the other thing is, you're not going to be able to just hire a police, I mean, once you put this into effect, it's going to take you several months to find a new police, so-
Well, and have-
And then how much of an, how much of an emergency was it then, if, yeah.
Yeah.
I think for thirty days.
I think the thirty days is, is what we should do, because, like, for all the reasons you mentioned.
Well, and I think too, that by starting discussions, and we don't have to do, I mean, it's not like we're not deciding. You know, but it's just discussions, and kind of some follow-up stuff to go with it, that if we're going to have a department that has one more officer to provide the coverage, I mean, we can still do some eight-hour days, five days a week, and double up minimally on a weekend, but we had a, an incident Thursday that entailed gunpoint, and those, I don't like our officers out there when there's nobody out there. I mean, we always have double coverage, I'm not saying we're going to have double coverage, but it's got, it's their lives, you know? I mean, it just scares me, it just-
Well, that's more important at night, because, I mean, during the day, we do have a state police officer or a sheriff's deputy around town, but we don't always have that every night.
Are the deputies on duty twenty-four hours, or?
Yeah, they get off at twelve.
Twelve, yeah, and, or twelve again.
So they're on later, I'm aware of it.
And ours go off at four?
Ours scary, ours scary.
Three to four, by then, and they have a sheriff's deputy on, usually between four and five.
Yeah, but I would like to see even if we don't do this, and I've talked to our new, hopefully, chief, that we will work with the counties or the states, so when theirs goes off, maybe ours overlap an hour before theirs go off, but then we have it like from eleven PM to seven AM or something, so that we do have that coverage. So we have twenty-four, but then they don't have a backup unless you call, you know, somebody out, so, yeah.
If we do a fee, do we need a fire fund as well?
Well, that's what I was going to ask too, yeah.
If we're going to do it, we shouldn't do it later, we should do it all at one time.
And that's one thing that I'd like to talk about a little bit.
Sample has both in the draft, so that's a, but that's-
If we're collecting five dollars, how do we divide it? That's not very much money for a department.
Which needs more, the police department needs more, I would take it that, and so how about seven fifty for police and two fifty for fire? I, I don't know, I'm just throwing out numbers, because I have no idea what it, you know, might, might need in the fire department to, to help it, but I know we-
What kind of help do they need? I mean, what's, what are their needs?
Well, I'll tell you what's going on in the fire department, and I've said this, and it's the dispatch fire.
That's a crossover that causes complications.
That is causing a lot of heartache, because right now, I don't have those numbers in front of me, I think I left them in my office, but we're at, what, how much hundred, how much percentage over in dispatch on overtime?
General, over at six hundred and eighty percent of budget for overtime dispatch.
Excellent. And what is it in fire?
Four hundred and something.
Yeah, so we're almost a thousand percent over in overtime. And we, that doesn't, that, we hired a part-time fill-in position, which was Ben, and he averages between eighty hours a pay period, or a hundred and ten, depending on his shift, and that's part-time filling. Well, now we've had a bumping up in dispatch, but if we didn't have him, the percentage of overtime, that, that rate would be so much more expensive, because he's down here, where some of these guys that are doing overtime are-
Why, why are they doing overtime?
Well, Stan was outside for two months.
Yeah, I got, I know.
They have vacations, and when they've been here quite some time, they have pretty extensive vacations. So, you know, we've got four that are pretty well-paid, that are taking vacations sickly, they're, they seem to be sharing a sick thing almost every month, it seems like. About four of them are sharing the sickness, I don't know, I mean, they can't talk, it's, I don't know what it is, but, yeah, so it's sick in the vacation.
And have you chatted with them about that?
I've chatted with their supervisors.
So, it sounds as though we would be better off to hire new personnel and increase our number of dispatchers, rather than pay overtime, I mean, it's less than our budget all to help, so.
And I can, I had a little conversation with Jeff today.
And it's complicated for real, union. Yeah, yeah. So I, it's not something I can shoot from them and tell you how you would change that right off the bat, especially with, I mean, hopefully, some, some people retire, that's one, you know, that's always a problem with union employees, is that, just the nature of seniority, and how pay increases go, and everything else, it's government work, typically how it works. So a restructuring is an option.
Do we freeze their salaries through negotiations because of the overtime costs? Possibly, I don't know how well that would go. Well, yeah, well-
When are they up for their next薪调?
Anytime, and in, in June, end of June, because I just did it for one year last year, because I had no idea where the wages were.
Well, and because of its close tie-in with, with the fire and the dispatch, and the intergovernmental monies that come our way from the bomb lines, that's needed to be tended to for a great number of years, and the county and the town have an intergovernmental committee that we're on, and you've not met for-
Years.
Several years now. And it's time to force the issue, and to come to some kind of negotiating table between the county and us in regards to our dispatch and emergency services. You know, I, it's, it's kind of been waiting to explode for a good long while, and nobody seems to want to meet, but it's time.
Well, and the other thing is, and my question is looking at overall, the picture, other cities run their fire with a fire size, pretty much, or, you know, in that sense, with a stipend, police or fire chief, and a super, or a, you know, assistant fire chief, and then volunteers. And so they have a much lower fire employee, you know, or some headline item, but they operate it just fine, and they don't have these people on this two-hundred-and-twelve-hour shift, or per month thing, that we're going to be talking about, and negotiation's pretty heavy, because the way it looks now is if you are on a shift, but, but you end up having to go to training, or somebody's sick, and so you're moved to shift, they consider that overtime. So, you know, if, if they have to cover for somebody, that's overtime. So anytime, and, you know, it's a, what is it, ninety-seven hour, ninety-seven point five hour work week, or ninety-two point five, something that's really there.
Six point two-five, if everything is, works out exactly right.
Right.
And so what happens is that this is my shift, and if I work that shift instead of training days off, that shift is overtime, yeah, whether I work my shift or not, that-
That's how it has been established within the union contract. In the union contract, it says that if they work overtime, over two-hundred-and-twelve hours, that is considered overtime.
So it's not exactly what the-
It's not-
Contract says.
No, but it is how it has been-
But what they're doing is what we've been doing, and so that's-
So my thought is, do you have just dispatch, and then have, you know, your paid, your fire chief, and your volunteers, and an assistant, you know, take it, take it out of that combined thing that's costing us so many, I mean, those are just thoughts, I'd like that-
But it needs to be looked at in the first round, like I said.
For almost a thousand percent over in overtime. And that's with a new person, that's with a new person that we get.
I, I'm sorry, but it kind of smacks of some little insider dealing.
Well, and I, like I say, the only way you could get around the, the overtime is to hire new personnel that could fulfill those hours, and there's nobody getting those kind of hours, these organ fees that they're drawing right now. I mean, the other option, the other option to do with the overtime, being as expensive as it is, is technically hire two or three more personnel that aren't going to be overtime, and just, those are the people that get used for fill-in.
Right. Well, and the one thing that we're finding is, people may want to dispatch, but they don't want to go through fire school. And if you're going to be part-time even, you have to go through dispatch school-
The way we work.
And, and you have to go through care school.
And it's difficult with part-time, because people generally want a full-time job, so they may leave, you know, and then leave us in the lurch again, but that, because they found a, a full-time job somewhere.
And we found with Ben, because he was working so many hours, we had to make him technically full-time pay as many a whole, because the, because he was working a hundred and ten hours consistently, I mean, he was working all night.
I never had a part-time job like that.
Yeah. So those are things I would really like to look at, as we're coming up, I mean, I'm not saying we can do it this year, obviously, but I think it's something that we should-
Well, I think it better be part of our negotiation strategy this, for this upcoming year, where, how big this is overtime they'll get when we start adding it up.
You've got the numbers, that's more, yeah.
Well, the, the thing I always dealt with over there, was your dispatcher, being a fireman, would take the truck out, because right now, we don't have that many volunteers, and then, so that means the fire chief or somebody would have to go to the station, take a truck to the fire, and it takes that much longer, but I think it's also cut down on our fire ratings.
Yeah, I, I asked to see a copy of that, and this doesn't have a copy of that, so that may be something upstairs, of the ISO rating that was done in maybe two thousand and three.
I think it was done a long time ago, in Chart Two, because I remember when they came here, and I went with them to look at various, where the hydrants are, and all kinds of things.
And the flows and stuff, yeah. And so, is it, I guess my question is, is it, because you have somebody that are ready to go on call, or you have somebody that's paid to be here on call? You know, either way, because it, because it would be, is it going to drop or change ISO rating for that kind of?
Well, two employees at regular pay is probably much cheaper than how much overtime is we're doing, so you could have a fireman and a dispatcher, and be better off than what we're doing right now.
And to answer your question, the full year overtime for dispatch fire was four thousand dollars, and as of the end of February, we'd already spent twenty-two thousand.
We budgeted four.
The four thousand was- We budgeted four, and as of the end of February, we spent twenty-two.
And that's in both departments?
That's in both fire departments, added together.
Dispatch and fire?
Dispatch and fire. We budgeted four thousand, and, and we had twenty-two as of the end of February.
What if we, if one of the, if they don't want to become firemen, but the one that they work with is also a fireman, then that one would have to take the truck out all the time, the other one would just stay on the desk.
And the problem you're going to have partially too, with any setup that you do, is that if you do split out just dispatchers, the people that are going to go out on fire are going to be the most expensive employees, because they are the only ones that are dual certified. And so whatever option you want to do, if your goal is to save money, is you probably need the person on the fire side of it, fill-in person, or the part-time person is a fireperson, to go, because the overtime's going to be on the, most likely on the fire side of it instead of the dispatch.
But if he's a volunteer fireperson and he goes out, why are you paying him an hourly rate?
Well, he wouldn't be there, he wouldn't be there at the, the emergency services building for immediate dispatch to a fire, if, if he wasn't a paid fireman.
No, when, when he's on dispatch, well, then he's getting paid. If he goes out on the fire, why do we pay volunteer people hours?
They aren't, they are actual fire employees, they are not volunteer, they are actually-
The dispatch.
Right, they're, the dispatchers are-
Yeah, well, yeah, we know that, sort of.
So-
I just think it's gotten out of hand, and I think that it's costing the town way too much money, because you look at this public safety fee, so do you do some for dispatch, some for fire? You know, I think you're right, Mike, we need to set some meetings up and get that negotiated, because that's been neglected, when nobody's increased.
But we have that intergovernmental agreement with all the fire departments, I think.
And remember, we are getting money, we are getting money from the Lakeview Rural Fire Department.
Right.
Basically, we, and not just dispatch, and fire services as well, they own the equipment, but our guys are the ones that go out on it, so that's a source of revenue, so we've got to be careful, you could lose revenues too.
I don't think we want to do, do that to them either, because they've always been helpful for us.
Correct, and they've been very consistent, there was a problem four or five years ago, but they've been very consistent paying since then, since that issue's addressed, so it's-
Because that's the, like, forty-eight thousand a year we get from the rural fire.
And I don't know if you guys can sustain that agreement, if you don't have staffed firefighters, that's, unless you can get enough volunteers to go, so that's another potential. You've got to be really careful, this is, this is a, kind of a tangled tapestry, and you start pulling on individual threads without looking at the whole picture, it can cause problems with some partnerships that you have, so that's the- Yeah, it was carefully molded, you can tell that it was put together, and it was previous to my turn, you know, on the council, so.
Were you involved with that, so, as far as, that's been a long-
It's been done a long time, I think, I don't, I think it's twenty-
Oh, yeah, no, that was, even before my time, yeah.
Well, that's what I was thinking, it's been going on a long time.
Well, I had the pleasure of being involved that last time.
Carefully molded at the time.
That was when we had the big hoopla, or, a couple of commissioners being, yeah.
I think it's been that way ever since I've lived here, which is like forty years.
But I think, you know, at some point, we got, we went, we got through that, yeah.
There are very few communities, and I, in doing my research in regards to the emergency services, and having the ties that we have with the radio station and, and the local primary, we, we are one of very few communities that actually have an emergency services dispatch. Most of them are through regional, such as Bend or Metford, or-
Right.
And, and so, you know, if we want to give that up, then it, I think it would increase the response time on all of our services, and I would hate to see it go, but that's, you know, that's the answer that a lot of towns have, have turned to, and-
And, and they probably face the same kind of economic problems we're facing with the like, so that was, and we would be kind of hard to pay for that.
Yeah, you're still, yeah, you're still paying the service, and they're getting your intergovernmental agree, uh, the fees that come down through Century Lincoln and the phone company services, they're getting those instead of the town to disperse among employees and employ people here.
We aren't paying twenty-two thousand dollars in overtime every year either.
I mean, we're at least about three, half three months, basically.
Yeah, we're not through.
No. So, and Scott stepped up and done a, he's done a few more hours and stuff, and then we've been doing that transition with Century Lincoln and all that cabinet stuff, but he's taken a couple shifts lately.
And, and all those numbers are through the end of February, so that gives us a full third of the year, March through June, so that's three months that we're still going to pay for, yeah.
It's just, I'd want you guys to be aware of it.
Seven thousand dollars.
Well, is it, in, in regards to that then, what I was saying, seven fifty for police and two fifty for fire, can we put the two together for public safety fee, and just say ten dollars as a- And then it's going to be allocated thirty percent to fire and seventy percent to, yeah, absolutely.
Or as needed, because there may come a time when one thing has to be taken care of, and, and we switch them.
Well, that's what I was wondering, if we can kind of juggle those figures, as long as it's a public safety fee. This one, this one, as it's written, it's, it doesn't say it goes one direction or the other, I mean, maybe you don't put an allocation at all, if you look at dedication of funds, section two in the exhibit- If you look at dedication of funds, section two in the exhibit, "All public safety surcharges shall be distinctly and clearly noted and will for revenue expenditure should be used for improved maintenance of the operation of police and fire departments. Surcharges collected shall not be used for general or other government or private purposes." With those restrictions, it can be allocated however it wants. So like I said, if you were dealing with a levy, you might want to be more explicit and say, look, this is 70, this is a specific percentage split. Otherwise, as long as you're within those two general categories, the only flip side of that is, is sometimes politically that can be seen as a slush fund. So that's, but again, legally, you're absolutely entitled to. And so like I said, it's a flip decision. You just need to figure out as far as what is the, how you want it. Because it'd be written up a whole bunch of different ways as far as, there's no, there's quite a bit of flexibility built into this. So this one as it's written is kind of, exhibit A is what would be adopted into the NIS code under section 3.8 under the utilities section. And it would be, like I said, it's kind of, you know, and you've got some appeals process, you've got some ways of reducing it for some low income. I wouldn't go outside of many of the other procedures that are in here. I think the bigger, the moving part should be how much? And then if you want a specific allocation, the percentage or. Well, we, we definitely have a need in police and we definitely have a need in fire. So if we went for a $10 fee, then that could be adjusted by management as to what, what we need. And you can't raise the, and the way this is written, you can't raise that rate without going back to another ordinance.
Which is good because that helps the public understand, we're not going to just change it tomorrow.
Jack you around every day.
If we, if we do the split kind of thing, no matter what the split is, what is it that we're now going to put our money to? Are we going to, is this going to take care of our overtime fee? Which pisses me out in the first place. So, I mean, so what are we, what are we putting those dollars for fire to if it's not just to keep up the system that we're all dissatisfied with? I, I don't understand where that money would go. A hired extra person?
Right now, we have the dispatch and fire needs that we have budgeted and will continue to have to do that unless we totally realign. So there is a need for that money to, to be in public safety, whether it be, and I guess you could include it in dispatch if you had to, because those are all departments that you have within and they're all public safety.
What I don't want us to see is to be able to find extra money so we can keep going with a service that we're.
No, that needs to be, that needs to be realigned.
We need to figure out how we rely on it and use that money if it's for equipment, if it's for an extra employee, if it's for things like that. But I certainly don't want us to say, okay, we have to have more money because we're going to be like, when we get through with this, probably over $30,000 in debt for this. And oh, well, we'll just assume, you know, that responsibility and keep going with it. I don't want to see that at all.
Well, as Jeff said and reiterated, the fact that we would have those new employees, if we hired those, that money could go towards that. This money would go to a new police officer to, to lower the cost of operating emergency dispatch. And again, some of the problem may take care of itself as I don't know where the higher level plays are in terms of being able to retire.
Twenty-two years.
But then we, Scott retired.
And he's taking a lower salary too. But that's a different, that's a different scenario. You don't have any obligation, once they pull their trigger on their purse, to rehire them. So, and they, if they do, they get, they're only going to be part-time because purse folks.
Folks have.
There's, there's a, there's a limit there.
29 hours, yeah.
But somehow, when Scott retired, they got to put, they put him under police. And we haven't seen any documentation, but he says he can move as much overtime as long, or whatever. But Dennis can't.
The 911 thing has been under, always like statistics and things under the place.
And that's how he got.
Right. And there is a state law, I think, with communities under a certain population. I think it's 20,000 or something like that. Because it's some of the same types of stuff.
It says schoolteachers can do the same.
Schoolteachers can do the same thing.
Not anymore. They've been really on top of how many hours you can work.
But you can work.
No, well.
You can work part-time, but you can't work so much.
Uh, there's an exemption, actually, they, they can, that's been done with some, you know, retired.
Used to, yes.
I think they still can. I don't think that rule has changed, but it, not that it matters. But there is some specific rules for police and fire because they realize that smaller areas have limitations as far as.
Well, and they also retire with 20, though they still, yeah.
Yeah, they can retire at either 20 or 50, or if they had 50, if they got 20 in.
Yeah. And technically, Dennis should have been able to fall under dispatch also because he was dispatching at the time. You know, so I don't know how that, it wasn't pushed at the time that he, the fire, go under fire. But we have to monitor, yes, monitor his hours very closely.
Well, just like we've been having to take a look at our police department, we need to take a close look at fire and dispatch because they're intertwined and they're all out of the same building. So I, I would feel good if we, I, I think we need monies in all those departments. And so if we had a public safety fee that is $10, I, I feel comfortable with that. I don't think that forces anyone's monthly fee to the town of Lakeview up that high because we have such a low rates on water and sewer incidents. So, you know, I probably will be shocked as soon as I walk out the door for saying that. But I think that, you know, a $10 fee for, for an increase in police protection, for fire protection increase, and also for emergency services dispatch, those are all very sound practices for the town to become involved in.
Maybe we could do, like you said, we could take the fire for police, 250 dispatch, 250 fire. You know, but still within the overall picture.
And again, I don't know, if you limit yourself, if you put in a specific allocation, remember.
I don't think we would.
I don't think you, yeah, you, you would be stuck with that. So that would reduce the flexibility.
It would split as needed.
Right. And that's what it says. As long as it's not, as long as it's being used in those three areas for public safety, you're fine. And those are services the public expects. And so we're only enhancing that by. And I think we would want to specifically mention, well, I guess, I guess dispatch is under the police department, is it not?
Well, it's technically its own fund, but when I've talked to people that have come in to look at the chief's jobs in different towns, how they run it, dispatch is under the fire or under the police. It should be, it actually should be ran by the police chief because it's, you know, that's how it should actually be.
Well, I think, I think the addition I'd want to make then at exhibit A is I think I would want to split, I would want to mention, if you're interested in funding all three, assuming you want to go forward with this and wherever you're at in the process, I think you would want to be explicit and just list all three. It doesn't hurt. I, I think that's.
I don't, I don't mind listing all three, but I don't want to put a number.
No, no. We're, we're just saying, it can be, because again, this, section two, the dedication section states, this is the only ones who can go fund. It's not going to general funds. So that's, the idea behind that is so it's not a slush fund, it's a general fund. Painting the street out there. Right.
Dispatch.
Dispatch, please. And then up there above in the exhibit, it says 15 and, and that was just, we were just talking last time about water. So, you know, but you can't have it in this. It has to be very clear. And that's why I think now we're having discussions and we can have many, many discussions before now an implementation. It could be July 1, it starts, or, you know, whatever. I mean, we're not in a rush, but there is a need for additional police protection.
Definitely. And I, I like Sandy's idea of, well, even during the 30-day period it lowered. You know, I mean, we, we need to give them more comment period before that even gets going, before the 30-day period.
Oh, yeah.
Before this 30-day period.
Because we've signed it, it's already law. But we don't want to get feedback before then.
And let them know what our feelings are and why we're, we're enacting something to enhance those entities that we offer.
I mean, if you look at the big picture of the police department, now, we did just get in, well, it's '09, but that's the newest year car we've gotten in quite some time. And we're going to be able to get, I think, 2,000 forms here in the next, for very little to no. But our fleet, you know, you have to think about that whole picture, you know, of what our officers are.
Working with and what they trust.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's more than just personnel. It's more than the, it's just a little bit of everything. So it's just a session.
Does anyone have any other questions related to some of the other nuts and bolts of what this would look like?
I have, it mentions in section four, the public safety committee. So that's something we have to establish.
You know, it could be you guys. I mean, that's what I kind of look at it as, as county council. I mean, unless you want a specific two of you.
Well, the public safety committee shall be responsible for bill games. Three members to administer the appeal process.
Okay. And that'd be a meeting, or that would be a forum anyway, if you had three councillors.
Well, we'd have to have three, two councillors and maybe you or something.
Or a publicizing meeting, I guess, but.
I would actually do a separate committee because what the problem you're going to run into, this is an appellate process. So that committee, that committee is the initial review and then it can appeal ultimately to the town council. So I think you want to have it made up of other folks, no more than three. I would, I, I don't think you can have any members, I mean, no more than two. Because again, you guys, you made a decision at an earlier level, you can't make one at the ultimate level.
That's true.
Kind of self-interest involved, maybe?
Well, ba- basically, you're, yeah, exactly. You're simply biased.
Yeah, where somebody's appealing or something, and we say, well, this is how, you know, yeah, I think you're right. It's.
I mean, you could have a public safety committee that was made, traditionally made of council members, but then you could need three members to be the appeal board that were not. So it's how big a board do you really want to set up? And that's kind of a. I think we should keep it as trim as we can, but make sure that we're living up to what it calls for.
And I'm assuming that people that feel like they can't pay that or want to appeal that sooner. Are those that have low income? Do we want to charge them $50 to file an appeal?
I don't know. In my little secret. But I'm thinking about my summertime debt because, you know, okay, my lawn is green and it's going to stay green. So sometimes my water bill in the summers anywhere from $60 to $70. So if you're going to add another $10 on there, I'm certainly going to pay it, but I'm going to kind of whine every month. So, because basically you're asking me to pay another, what, $120 a year?
Until you need the fire department or the police department to answer the call.
And I've needed them.
And then you'll, I appreciate that.
Yes, so.
That's what makes a difference.
But that's, I'm not, what I'm saying is, okay, my budget will stretch. But they're there, but all you have to do is look around people in the summer and see how many people don't water their lawns. Because, you know.
The kids that drive the cars.
In this little handout that I did, it does say that, do we offer any low-income or senior discounts? And I did put in there that if the responsible party shows proof that household income is equal to or less than 30%, which is quite a few people, based upon family size too, they could get a discount.
Okay.
You know, so in case there are.
There's the hardship. That was in the handout, but I.
Yeah.
Something in regards to, that came to my mind, and I know that's not the way we should run water services because we do have a business to run, but something that comes to mind since we're doing all the flushing, maybe during the summer months, we should offer to our customers
A discount.
Extra water at a discount and look at our rates for that reason. I mean, we need to flush our systems anyway. That's something that they told us we need to do. And if everybody has a green lawn, we have less fires, we have, so I don't know. It's just something. Since you mentioned it, you're, Daryl had actually talked about that, hadn't he, as far, remember? Talking about giving people during flushing times.
Right, during flushing times, not like in summer.
To flush their system out, right. I mean, you would have to set a limit because people would take advantage of it and water all the time in 24 hours.
Also, and we'll talk to Daryl about that, as far as if you were to allow more, you know, a cap on how much they use, you know, instead of a thousand gallons for this during the summer, we could, you know, encourage them to flush lines. I don't know. Like, what, give up?
The other thing that I never understood.
Flushing your lines.
Yeah, that's what we wanted to do.
We've had periods of time when we didn't have quite enough water. Remember?
You had to put that away.
But I don't understand why we don't have watery days set. You know, like if you're even number house, number your water.
They did it at one time.
They did it way back.
They did it very long drought.
You know, and, and a premium for watering at night, which makes a huge difference. But I don't know why we don't do that. And so, you know.
Those are some things I need to look at.
Those are things that kind of regulate what you're going to be doing. Okay, I can, I can water three days this week.
Yeah.
I tell you, it irritated me no end when I would walk in the mornings later and then the school had their baseball fields being watered and they still were on at like 1:00 in the afternoon.
Yeah. But maybe we can do something and I'll, I'll look into that, like conservation during the day, you know, you're, you'll get, you know, I don't know, we'll, we'll look at that.
Yeah. I think maybe those are some options for people because you can, you water in the evening, you know, like saves you so much.
Yeah. Well, and also, you know, it doesn't evaporate.
Yeah. And that's what gets so. And it goes to your lawn and your flowers.
Well, we, we've had the public safety fee on our work session and on our regular agendas for discussions for, for a good while now. Do we need to delve into seeking public comment now or it's just going to?
What's next? That would be my suggestion is we start getting it out in the public.
Because we, we have no comment right now in the, in the audience. And if they knew it was, I mean, if it was advertised, that's what we'd have going today.
And we could start, I mean, these are ideas, but start having articles in the newspaper and then set a time and place for public comment before council.
The other thing that you do is something like the Survey Monkey or something like that, where you have sent out in the water bill like a, a login and anonymous survey where they don't have to send it back in, or they can get online and. Like an anonymous site. And then that would give you some idea of, and then as long as you get a statistically valid sample.
But that, that makes such an assumption, Jeff, that everybody can do that.
One person sat there and correct a Survey Monkey, I'll do that. No, each person would, we'd give them the unique login. Okay, through the, through the.
But I'd say, whatever your questions are, if you could keep it on one sheet of paper, you would have the questionnaire here. If you'd rather go online, do this because an awful lot of people, I'm always surprised, even like with our Seroptimus membership of 40 or 50 people, there's a good 10 to 15 people that we have to give them a hard copy of something because they're not on Facebook, they're not, they don't have the internet.
Right.
So.
The other option is, like I said, actually set a public hearing and just do it.
I think we have to do them all.
I think we should do both or, you know.
Whatever else we think of, anything. I would be happy to.
Because you know what we're going to face.
I think we should shut them up and go ahead and get a mailing. We can't even start the process.
And I think that more, no matter what we do, as soon as it goes into effect, that's when people are going to want it.
But I think, because now it's March and if we really start the first of April and we have till middle of June and, and really have it out there, I think we'd be.
So if we build then the first time in July.
So.
That would be our fiscal year too.
Kind of plan on that worked in there as well.
I can start working on that. And anybody that wants to go in, you know, like the elk or the, not the elk, the rotary or the Seroptimus or the, you know, to discuss it or a key to come and discuss it, then just ask me.
Well, I think they'll give you an opportunity.
Put you on the hot seat. Yeah, I've been there the same time. Every time I go to rotary, they give me a bad sign, I hope it's water. Oh, it's bottled today, so.
In regards to water, are we having complaints come in now?
Um, we had a really bad one come in on, on Thursday last week. And it truly was bad, but it was a dead in line up by where Ray lives. It was Andrew Rucker's house and it was black. It was just black. But it was a dead in line.
Was that after flushing or before flushing?
Because we flushed money through Wednesday and then.
So it broke something loose.
Yeah. Yeah. So they were going to go up and again, work on it today a little bit. But it, it was the worst I've ever seen.
Well, but that's been the whole thing. If you're at the end of the line, that flushing has nowhere to go except you.
Well, and I talked to Daryl today and met with him later, but we talked about on those dead in lines, put a blowout. So you, you know, when you're flushing lines, that cap comes off, you blow it out.
And not come back into people's line.
Yeah. So he said that was a good idea. So I didn't have to talk to Jeff. But on any of those that are dead in lines, just put a, you know, blow out. So when you do it, they take it off, they blow it out.
Because that's where the problem, because the last two things that you mentioned, I know the one that was south of town, whatever, that's the same type thing. So. And that's where we're getting the bad name.
Am I in? So, so I'll start working on this.
Yeah, if that, if that's a solution, I mean, I don't know what cost per.
Not that much, maybe 15, 20 bucks and then just.
Yeah.
I'm not angel of the lines.
The extra time each time we open up the line.
And if that would, we'd gain a whole lot of terrible water for people, plus a lot of. And if that would, we'd gain a whole lot of terrible water for people, plus a lot of complaints.
Yeah. So, yeah. Hey, well, keep moving forward. Thank you. All right.
So what we're doing effectively is tangling this while we get, gather information from the public.
Or not really tangling it.
Yeah, just moving forward with public comment.
Moving forward with public comment because there are things in here we can't really decide until we know.
And also to disseminate to the public what, what we're doing and why we're doing it. So that's.
Yeah. And, you know, I can make more of these things with the questions on them, you know, just, you know, what is it, why does it get them out?
Get it period.
Yeah. If they want to come in and pick one up or at the post office.
Or maybe you could lay them around different places, CRO Center, just in different places.
Let people talk about it.
Yeah.
All right.
So you might need to be about it.
Do we have a notebook?
Anything else? We will adjourn our work session at 3:55.